Hammond City Council is now in session. Stand for the flagellations.
First, before I start, I want to certainly say, uh, thanks be unto God who gives me the strength and thanks to the library for our name is Willa May Dur. This past week, it was certainly an experience and I really appreciate it. Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying thank you, Lord, for another day. We ask that you give us guidance and direct us in all our ways, Lord. We ask that you give us peace and understanding. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Court Golick roll call.
Markovich.
Here.
Spatelli.
Yep.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas. Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from February 11th, 2013.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Kalwinski to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Minutes approved. Approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims dated February 6th through February 20th for the meeting of February 25th. Beginnings with claims dated 2/12/13 and anyway claims 2/20/13, starting with claim number 905 through claim 1107, for a total of $2,038,606.16. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion on the claims? Any discussion on the claims? Court Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Claims pass, eight zero, one absent. Moving on to public hearing. Public hearing is now open for ordinances 1302, 1303, and 1304. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up to the podium. Sure.
Ordinance 1302 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski and ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2013 gaming fund. Ordinance 1303 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and ordinance to appropriate monies in the Hammond redevelopment account. And the last item for public hearing, ordinance 13-04 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski and ordinance to appropriate funds in the hotel motel innkeeper's tax fund for the Hammond Park Department.
Public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to come to the podium and speak. Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to communications. Are there any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, me and my colleagues received a correspondence in regards to incident that happened at Dodo's Bar and Grill at 521 Conkey Street. I just wanted some clarification as to what exactly happened. Uh, I spoke to Ms. Dodo. I've been a friend of hers. I've had functions there for a number of years as establishment has been there. The mayor in 2010, February, wrote some correspondence on the letter that I submitted uh, in regards to that particular issue. And I somewhat take offense. I didn't respond immediately when it initially happened, but I took offense to the way it was addressed. Certainly I am for, uh, supporting those individuals that do right and not wrong. And if you're selling drugs or drugs are being sold in an establishment, it is the police responsibility to do what's necessary to prevent that from happening. And certainly I'm not a law enforcement agent. I'm not a police officer and I don't sit in the bar and grill seven days a week, 24/7. However, there are some issues that relate to her establishment that she need to correct and she needs to do what's necessary to get those items corrected, whether she meet with the code enforcement, whether she meets with the city attorney, police chief, whatever it may be. And those issues I think are electrical and water. So those are the issues that need to be dealt with. And in reality, Dodo is a, uh, nice person. She's never offended me, done anything to me, and I don't think she's a threat to the community and I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. So everybody has a clear understanding as where I stand. If you're, if you're doing something illegal, it is the police job to do what's necessary to protect and preserve our city.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Committee reports. Any committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Uh, council will be bringing out 1302, 1303, 1304, 1305.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Ordinance's third and final passage.
Ordinance number 1302 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski and ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2013 gaming fund.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Move for final passage of 13-02.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spatelli for third and final passage. Is there any discussion on 1302?
Mr. President, can we have the clerk?
Councilman Higgs.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, can we have the clerk read that?
Court Golick.
And the amounts, please, thank you.
Whereas the city of Hammond requires the use of monies in the gaming fund for purposes set forth in ordinance 36.005 and whereas additional upspent monies remain from the 2012 appropriated balances and whereas this transaction being appropriation must have a public hearing for which the clerk of the common council is hereby directed to make arrangements and being subject to approval of the Department of Local Government Finance. Therefore, be it ordained by the common council of the city of Hammond that the following appropriations be and are hereby made as follows. First district, um, $352,083.79. Second district, $12,376.4. Third district, $44,236.88. Sixth district, $220,479.50. Shared 10%, $255,178.48. Mayor's balance, $2,885,929.73. The shared debt service, $885,537.60.
Thank you, Court Golick. Any other discussion? Court Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 1302 passes, eight zero, one absent.
Ordinance 13-03 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and ordinance to appropriate monies in the Hammond redevelopment account.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 13-03.
It's motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Henoza for final passage of 13-3. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, there was $878,519 that was left when the Marina and North Hammond tips were closed. Uh, the dollars automatically go to the general fund and need to be appropriated to the cash outlay to meet the obligations of Munster Steel, $353,000, Unilever, $400,000, uh, $75,000 for tax sale properties, and $50,000 to the South Shore plant.
Is there any other discussion? Court Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 13-3 passes, eight zero, one absent.
Ordinance 13-04 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski and ordinance to appropriate funds in the hotel motel innkeeper's tax fund for the Hammond Park Department.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for final passage of 13-04.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
May I request the clerk read the order?
Whereas the city of Hammond Park Department requires the use of monies in the innkeeper's tax fund for park tourism and media purposes and whereas these funds are currently available in the operating balance of the innkeeper's tax fund and need to be appropriated and whereas this transaction being appropriation must have a public hearing for which the clerk of the common council is hereby directed to make arrangements and being subject to approval of the Department of Local Government Finance. Appropriate up from the operating balance innkeeper's tax, $22,700. It's being appropriated to the hotel motel fund, $22,700.
Any other, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
This appropriation happens on an annual basis, uh, for the Park Department. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, I think.
Councilman Higgs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, during discussion in our committee meeting, I think, uh, what was said is that the money is utilized for advertisement in the Park Department.
Any other discussion? Court Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 1304 passes, eight zero, one absent.
Ordinance 1305 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and ordinance amending ordinance 7685, 8200, 8564, 8630, 8645, 8718, 8754, 8755, 8854, 8930, 9017, and 9061, also known as section 36.005, be one of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to approved uses of the 60% to be used for infrastructure and public safety in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 13-05.
Second.
It's motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Kalwinski. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this ordinance would prohibit the use of gaming dollars for dumpsters in the districts. Uh, as we discussed in caucus, we have problems with contractors dumping their debris in the, uh, the dumpsters that are placed in the neighborhood. Uh, I had a conversation with Gary Gleason, uh, the street commissioner, and when contractors find out that there's going to be a cleanup in the neighborhood, they call and want to get their name on a list. Uh, when the street department calls them back, uh, they discover that they are contractors. So they're trying to, uh, use what is intended for neighborhood cleanups to dump their debris. Uh, as many of you also know, in the city of Hammond, we have problems with, uh, illegal rehabs. The contractors, whether they are licensed or not, are rehabbing some properties. They hang on to their debris again and when there is a dumpster in the neighborhood, they go and dump all of their, uh, debris in the dumpsters. So that is the purpose for this.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Certainly, as I discussed previously in discussion in the committee meeting as it relates to dumpsters, when the program was implemented, it was, the purpose was to be utilized throughout the entire city and to make our community and our neighborhoods cleaner. And certainly, uh, never in, in my aspect of utilizing the dumpsters have I ever abused it, put signs there. As I stated previously, I don't need to put signs on dumpsters to get elected. I know what's necessary to run a campaign effectively. And, uh, for those individuals that may be utilizing them and doing such things, it's uncalled for. My solution to that particular issue was to possibly cut it down and not expand as much money as we had in the previous years. And certainly, I think it's an asset to the citizens of the city of Hammond and especially to my constituents in which I represent the third district of the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, uh, again, continuing, uh, with my conversation with Gary Gleason. Uh, after the scavenger ordinance was put into place that became effective, uh, the beginning of this year, I had a conversation with Gary Gleason about how he goes, uh, up and down the alleys in the city. They go down each alley once a week, at least once a week. If they get a call from a resident, they will write up a ticket and they will send one of their men out there to, um, uh, pick up the debris. And, and that being said, you know, if, if we are cleaning out our garage or our basement, uh, as I said in caucus, I don't know, call me lazy or call me smart, I don't want to make more than one trip. If, if I'm cleaning out my basement, I'm going to take my trash to the alley, call the street department, and have them come and pick it up. I personally don't want to take everything out of the basement, load up a truck, drive it over to the dumpster. That's only going to be there twice a year. Uh, if, if residents have trash that they want to dispose of as the result of a cleanup, they can call the street department. Um, I would like to point out that from 2009 to 2011, over $350,000, uh, $350,000 was spent on dumpsters and cleanups in the city of Hammond. How many streetlights could we have accomplished with that kind of money? Um, this ordinance eliminates dumpsters only, supplies for cleanups. If Councilman Higgs is going to have, or any other councilman is going to have a cleanup in their district, they can still purchase, uh, garbage bags, gloves, just not the dumpsters. Um, and, and I also wanted to point out, uh, in reference to the $350,000, um, if cleanups were that important, why is it in 2012, we didn't have a dumpster in the city of Hammond and we all survived? We all got our trash picked up. $350,000 is a lot of money.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
First, I'd like to respond in regards to, as it reflects to garbage bags and gloves or whatnot. I've never, ever had the city pay for any garbage bags or gloves. If anything, uh, Menards or someone from any community may have donated them, but the city's never paid for that. And I don't see anywhere in the ordinance as it relates that we can legally purchase those items. And if it is, please, uh, the city attorney is here, she can probably verify it, but I've never known that in the existence of having dumpsters in my community. Secondly, throughout the year, I'm constantly calling in regards to having things picked up. And there's property right now that I can tell you, if you leave right now and take a look between Conkey and Ames Street and the 900 block, there are all kinds of garbage debris. Uh, I don't know if there's a mattress that are in there and that you got tires and all kinds of stuff. People are, uh, losing their homes throughout my district and I think it's going to be, it's, it's actually going to affect the residents of the third district. And my job is, as a councilman, is to represent my constituents and then that was the purpose of putting it in place. And I think it's an asset to not just the third district, but the entire city of Hammond. And that's where I am not confident. Now, I do agree that the amount of money that's being spent in regards to dumpsters is way over the limit and something should be adjusted, but to eliminate the dumpsters, I don't think it's a wise decision. And I want my constituents to know that I'm not in favor of eliminating the dumpsters.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Councilman Emerson.
I would just add on to, uh, what Councilwoman Vines was saying. The number for the street department for you to call, uh, with anything you put in your alley is 8536302. And to me, uh, I've, I've done it, uh, either way, and that does seem a lot easier to me to take it out to the alley and we are paying taxes, uh, for that. So that's my addition.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
There was a lot said in the caucus that a lot of the people probably didn't see, but you know, one of the recommendations that I had, what they used to do in the past is that you can bring your trash and rubbish to Conkey Street and they would put it in the dumpster there. And they said, well, it costs too much money for somebody to stand there and check their driver's license to make they were, for, make sure that they're from Hammond. Well, then I brought up about college bound, that you know, we got all these kids there that, you know, we could probably still have the cleanup, put the dumpsters there on Conkey Street. We can have college bound kids standing there. Won't cost us anything other than the $277 an hour these kids make for doing community service, because that's what it comes out to. So these kids are making some big money there, $277 an hour, and they can monitor who's dumping the trash and making sure that, uh, they have, um, a valid driver's license that, that they live in Hammond. So, I mean, we're not, if that's what they want to do, they can do that. We can still have the dumpsters. It's not going to be as big as it was in the past and so forth, but you know, there's still possibilities and, uh, I don't know that if by changing this ordinance, eliminating the dumpsters altogether, if we're going to still be able to put dumpsters at Conkey Street and then use it that respect. So I don't know. So maybe down the road, if they want to go ahead and do that and still have the dumpsters, they're going to have to come back and, uh, change the ordinance again. Now, it was also brought up in, um, in the caucus that, uh, Ms. Vines is that Gary Gleason with the scrap things, you know, because we eliminated the scrap, that, you know, we receive $5,000 in scrap. Well, that, that's a good thing, but you know, you have to analyze it and, and give both sides of the story too. But let's just say that a guy makes $20 an hour driving a truck and that includes the benefits. I think their hourly scale is about 15, 70 an hour and with the benefits, that's $20 an hour. So if you take $5,000, what we collected in the scrap and divide that by $20 an hour, it comes to 250 man-hours. So now we've got a guy spending 250 man-hours. You divide that by eight, that's 32 days. So now we spent 32 days just to pick up scrap and I'm sure that, you know, 32 days, that, you know, it's costing us a lot more. Because the other thing you have to worry about, since they said that they're driving up and down the alleys once a week, we have 26 square miles here in the city of Hammond. I don't know how many miles of alleys and streets, but if you're figuring we're getting anywhere from six to eight miles per gallon for diesel, and let's just say it's $4 a gallon, it's still costing us a lot of money just to save for scrap. But I guess everybody's intentions are well and good, but you still have to look at the economics and the financial aspect of it to see if it really is doing any good and if it's helping it out. But people don't want to have services and I think that's what it's all these district councilmen are concerned about with the dumpsters as far as services. But I'm sure that something will be worked out and we have different options. And Mr. Daberton even mentioned something in there that, you know, maybe something can be worked out. So, you know, we'll just go and go from there. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, hold on, uh, Councilman Higgs. Mr. Daberton, you had a question?
I just want to clarify for everyone that as far as the scrap, um, it's been, it took, in the first month, it took in $5,000, which is about $60,000 a year. And Mr. Markovich is right, about $20 an hour for the employee, which means about $40,000 for manpower, which means that, um, it's, you know, 40,000 versus 60,000. So it's about, um, taking in about 1.5 times of the cost. So I, I just wanted to clarify that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Daberton.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like to point out that the street department going up and down the alleys is nothing new. That's part of their job. They have been doing that for a long time. So to imply that, uh, because the scrappers, uh, are now illegal, that the street department has to go down the alley, or if the, uh, elimination of dumpsters, uh, is approved tonight, that the street department is going to have to go down the alleys and that's going to be extra work, it's not extra. That is their job, that they do daily.
Any other discussion? Court Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
No.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
No.
Opinker.
Yes.
Ordinance is passed, six to two, one absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the ordinances for final passage.
All right, moving on to number nine, introduction of ordinances. There are none. Number 10, resolutions.
Item B, Resolution 13R05 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. A resolution confirming the appointment of Brandon Dorsey as a Commissioner of Hammond, Human Relations Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I have spoken with Mr. Dorsey and just to give you a little bit of information, uh, about him, he was born and raised in Hammond. He graduated from Hammond High. He is a teacher's assistant. Um, he is a, uh, wrestling coach at Hammond, uh...
Excuse me, Councilwoman Vines, do we have a motion before you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a motion, a second, then a discussion.
Move for final passage.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Henoza. Is there any discussion?
Alrighty, now I'll discuss.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, he is also a camp counselor at a special needs summer camp and, um, he's, uh, raising his two children here in Hammond and he is a fine gentleman. So, um, I ask for approval of Mr. Dorsey.
Any other discussion on 13R-05? Court Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Resolution 1305 passes, eight zero, one absent.
Item C. Resolution 13R06 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. A resolution confirming the appointment of Ann Herbert as a Commissioner of the Hammond A resolution confirming the appointment of Ann Herbert as a Commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of thirteen R dash oh-six.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spatelli, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
First and foremost, I wouldn't want anyone representing me that goes around at election time or not and representing the human relations on any capacity in the city of Hammond, pat and nay, but in front of my parents, your parents, or any other parent. Totally disrespectful, and I could never, ever support someone in that fashion. You're not gonna disrespect me, I'm not gonna disrespect you, and you certainly are not gonna disrespect my mother.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I thank you, Councilman Higgs, for your opinion. However, I would like to tell the remainder of the council and the viewing and listening audience about Ann Herbert. Ann Herbert is Vice President of the Citywide Crime Watch. She is a member of the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch. She is a Red Cross volunteer. Most recently, she returned from New Jersey after helping victims of Hurricane Sandy. She volunteers at the soup kitchen at Saint Monica and Luke Catholic Church in Gary. She is a board member of Park Bradley Center, which is a transitional home. I personally know Ann Herbert. She is very involved in the city. I understand that not all of us can like everyone. However, I do believe that because of Ms. Herbert's involvement in the community, that she would be an asset to the Human Relations Commission.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I beg to differ. Anyone that goes around disrespecting elders, it's the way you raised.
Mr. President, point of order.
I certainly, I am talking.
Mr. President, I have the floor.
Point of order.
The reality of it is, you're not gonna disrespect me and my mother.
Mr. President, point of order.
And I wouldn't do it to you, and I wouldn't allow you to have your mother. Order, order, order. Councilwoman Vines, you spoke twice on this issue. Councilman Higgs, you spoke twice on this issue. Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Higgs.
No.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Resolution passes seven-one, one absent.
Item D, Resolution thirteen R-oh-seven, sponsored by Councilman Emerson. A resolution confirming the appointment of Leanne Mignoz as a Commissioner of the city of Hammond Human Relations Commission in the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move to adopt Resolution thirteen R dash oh-seven.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spatelli, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I met Ms. Mignoz recently, and I talked to her at her place of employment, which is the Hammond Parks District. She is a graduate of Gavitt High School, a graduate of Purdue University Calumet, where her and her family benefited from the college bound program. She's had five years working in public relations, marketing environments, skilled in developing strategies for government, newspaper, and nonprofit organizations. She has the ability to thrive in a demanding environment, requiring a high degree of deadline-driven productivity, communications, and what I was impressed with was adaptability. She has worked her way up in the position she has now, and she, by all means, I think this is a very good appointment.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich.
Again, we've had discussions in the caucus that sometimes doesn't come out here on the council floor. I oppose this person, I don't know who she is or anything, but on January 2012, she was hired by the city of Hammond as Recreation Director. And then twelve months later, she got promoted to Building Manager at the Gene Shepherd Center. With the Kernan Report, Shepherd Report, you know, they brought up several things here in the city of Hammond about conflict of interest. Of course, some people can say it's not a conflict of interest, and it's not, but there's always that perception out there. When you have a city employee sitting on a board, and I've been on several boards with city employees, that you can tell you that the sky is blue and it's black, and they're gonna vote that it's black. And that's just the way it happens. When you have a boss that oversees you and determines whether you're still gonna have a job or not, you're gonna end up voting a certain way. And I've seen it time and time again on several of these boards. So, again, I don't know the lady. If she would've had a degree in social work, being at Human Relations, this lady is only twenty-two years old. A lot of us out there have been married, we've had kids, we have life conflicts, difficulties, and we know how to handle things that come before the Human Relations Board. Somebody brought up about rental, how come they're not getting their security deposit back? I'm surprised Human Relations even gets involved with something like that. That's why you have the courts. If a landlord doesn't want to give you your security deposit back, that's a civil action. That has nothing to do with the Human Relations or anything. So why that was even brought up, I mean, I don't even know. I mean, if the lady had a degree in social work, it'd be okay, but she has a degree in journalism. And what we have before us is her resume to apply for a job in journalism. It's not to be Recreation Director or Building Manager. Somebody that's a building manager ought to have a background in engineering or maintenance or so forth, so that when there's a problem at the building, that they can handle it. Not write a letter or anything, but that's just me, and that's the way I feel about it. But again, the basic thing is with the Shepherd Kernan Report is that city employees, and we have a new law that became effective July first, that if you're elected official, you cannot be a city employee. If you're a county official, you cannot be an elected official if you're a county employee. There's nothing different here that you should be sitting on a board being a city employee. We have eighty thousand people here. I'm sure we can find other people that want to sit on boards and volunteer. And the other thing is, we have several city employees that sit on more than one board, and that's not right either. So you beat a judge, when they're putting a city employee on a board, there's gotta be ulterior motives. If the person's qualified and educated and experienced, I have no problem with that. But when it comes down to when you have conflicts and resolutions and so forth, where it comes before this Human Relations Board, there's gonna be other factors that are gonna come into play, and the real outcome is not gonna be fair to both sides, whether it's the city or that employee. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Councilman Markovich can sit here and say that, but in reality, you need to put an ordinance before your colleagues and go forward with it, if that's how you feel about the employees and if you feel there's a conflict. That's reality. Let's not play games here.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich.
Councilman Higgs is absolutely correct. We used to have an ordinance here, it was in our salary ordinance, that if you were a city employee, you cannot sit on any board. You could not draw another salary. But lo and behold, that ordinance and the salary ordinance disappeared. It was stricken out of there. So I can concur with Councilman Higgs, that we'll have Mr. Berger go ahead and draw up the ordinance, and we'll see where it goes. Then we'll know what's going on here. But we did have that ordinance, and it was in our salary ordinance, and it was taken out. Why? You beat a judge.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like to point out that Leanne, according to her resume, was hired by the city of Hammond in March 2011, not 2012. So she has been with us for almost a couple, almost two years. She does have a Bachelor of Arts degree in public relations. I think that is the perfect background to be on the Human Relations Commission. Her minor is in journalism and marketing. Because I have attended a couple of the meetings of the Human Relations Commission, I know that they just got a grant that they have to spend. And what better way to spend that grant than to have somebody on this commission who has a journalism and marketing background? I've had a conversation with a doctor who lives in the Harrison Park area, who is concerned about Hammond marketing to the LBGT community. I think Leanne would be the perfect, the perfect candidate to be on this commission. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, I just wanted to.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you. I just wanted to say one thing, Leanne is not an elected official, and I, so I would just like to add that.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
It says here, March 2011, Special Events Intern. I don't recall seeing in our budget where we have a position being paid for Special Events Intern. It's my understanding when these people are working as interns, they're doing it as an education to get experience, but I wasn't aware we were paying interns now. And if we go back and look at the budget, I don't think there's a line item there or a specific position that says Special Events Intern for the Parks Department.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
No.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
No.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Resolution passes six-two, one absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Yeah, I have another appointment here for the Human Relations Commission that missed for the deadline, but I'll have to suspend the rules, and I have her education and everything here that I'll read after it comes out. Hopefully, you can help me out. I'd like to suspend the rules to bring out Resolution thirteen R dash oh-eight.
There's a motion to suspend the rules, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion by Councilman Henoza, second by Councilman Higgs, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rule suspended.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Yeah, this Resolution, it will be thirteen R dash oh-eight.
That's correct. Yes, you can read that. Clerk Golick, please.
Resolution thirteen R dash oh-eight, sponsored by Councilman Henosa. A resolution confirming the appointment of Gabriela Gallegos as a Commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Yeah, move for final passage of thirteen R dash oh-eight.
Motion for final passage by Councilman Henoza, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Vines, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Yeah, Gabriela Gallegos, lives in the sixth district on the 6800 block of Montana, attended Purdue University Calumet, obtained a bachelor's degree from School of Liberal Arts and Social Sciences and Foreign Languages with a GPA of three-point-six-eight, and also A.B. Honorable in the Dean's List. Anne Morton High School, four-forty diploma, June 2008, with a GPA of three-point-five. Her skills, speak and read and write fluently in English and Spanish, strong communication skills, loyal and dedicated employee, responsible, organized, respectful, and reliable. Employment history, she's been a substitute teacher from 2011 to 2012 in the school city of Chicago. She's been a paraprofessional at the school city of Chicago from 2009 to 2011, and also a school city of Hammond. She's been a tutor from November 2008 to 2009.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chairman. Councilman Calwinski.
Who would Ms. Gallegos be replacing?
Can you repeat the question, Mr. President?
Who would she be replacing? That's the question.
No, this is the first time for her, so I don't know.
Was there two available spots on this?
Mr. President.
That I don't know. Councilwoman Vines.
I'm aware of several vacancies on this commission.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Yeah, this one here, they, I guess had to pick somebody from the sixth district, and Gabriela Gallegos has the qualifications for it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Councilwoman, do you know how many spots are available on this?
Oh, I just looked at the list today. I wanna, I know they didn't have enough for a quorum.
How many are on this?
I wanna say, Commissioner Cheeks? How many commissioners are on?
Is it coming on now?
No, no, how many should there be?
It should be a total of nine.
Nine. And I know that they were missing at least five.
Any other discussion? Clerk, roll call vote on thirteen R dash oh-eight.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Resolution thirteen R-oh-eight passes eight-zero, one absent.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to go back into the regular order of business.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Henoza, second by Councilman Spatelli, to go back to the regular order of business, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to read a correspondence I received from Greater Hammond Community Services. It says, "Councilman Higgs, Office of the Common Council, 5925 Catman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, 4632." Dear Councilman Higgs, we are very grateful for your generous donation. A contribution like yours goes afar in providing for the needs of our people who have so little. Greater Hammond prides itself as being a leader in the delivery of social services to those people in our community who truly are in need. Greater Hammond strives to bring together a variety of funding sources and volunteers to meet the needs of the entire community. Because of your many cutbacks in the state and federal funds, we are more than ever dependent on local donations to effectively serve our community. Sincerely, Timothy P. Common, Executive Director. Thank you so much.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
On tomorrow, and exemplifying and acknowledging Black History Month at 10:00 a.m. in the City Hall chambers, Mayor McDermott, as well as the Community Development Corporation, will be having a tribute to the oldest African-American females in the city of Hammond. So those of you who can attend, please attend, and thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would also like to announce another Black History program sponsored by the Eastside Community Council. Will be Thursday, February 28th, at the Ophelia Steen Center, 6:00 p.m. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would also like to announce some Crime Watch meetings for those who are interested in doing good in their community. On Wednesday, February 27th, Columbia Crime Watch is meeting at Columbia School, 6:30 p.m. Also, on Wednesday, February 27th, Jefferson Crime Watch is meeting at 6:30 p.m. at Jefferson School. Friday, March 1st, Irving Community Watch is meeting at Irving School, 1:30 p.m. Wednesday, March 6th, Edison Community Watch will be meeting at Edison School, that is at 6:30 p.m., and the mayor is the guest speaker for that evening. Also, Edison Community Watch is going on the road. They will be at the Golden Manor Senior Apartments on Thursday, March 7th, at 1:30 p.m. And that is how change happens, one gesture, one person, one moment at a time. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President, I would like to.
Councilman Higgs.
I would like to personally thank my mother and my aunt, as well as Talia, and some of my other family members, and Ms. Cobb from the NAACP for attending the meeting tonight. Thank you so much.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Just for FYI, Saturday, I attended a meeting in Marigold, and State Representative Riordan was there, a number of, Senator Lonny Randolph. Representative, uh, Riordan was there, uh, a number of, uh, Senator Lonny Randolph, uh, a number of veterans, and another concerned citizens, and the, the issue that I went there for, uh, was Lake County is attempting and working to get a Veterans Court, and I just wanted to bring it out here in New and Unfinished that people would like to call me with information on it, it, it does have some, some resistance, not from the county, but from other people, oh, the sheriff, uh, Sheriff Bunsech was there, and it was an informational meeting, not so much for the court, but for a lot of bills that affect us and Hammond that are going on in Indianapolis right now, and I won't get into a lot of them, I'm sure you're gonna hear about them, uh, affect the whole state. And like everything down there, from what I remember is, uh, from reading the paper and studying a little bit, things happen in sessions, and, and what we're hearing now may not be what the final votes are. But anyway, if anyone has any questions about the Veterans Court proposal in Lake County, give me a call, and, uh, I can tell you our side of it. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I certainly wanna emphasize on that, that there is gonna be some legislation acting, uh, in terms of the state reps, uh, this coming month, uh, in March, and, um, at the State House, and so, I don't know if you received it in your package, whether if you're interested in attending, I would assume that you, uh, possibly sign up and try to be there as well. I plan to attend and find out some of the important issues like the library and some other issues, I'm certainly gonna come up, as the governor will address some of the issues that's gonna affect, uh, the city as a whole.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Last council, when I talked about the little city by the Lake Whiting, where the girls won the sectionals, they beat Bishop Noe, and I'm unhappy to report that they didn't win the regionals, they got beat in the first game by Boone Grove, and, um, so I'm not a happy camper when we lost, neither were the girls, but they represented Northwest Indiana, they did a good job, and, um, like I said in the minutes here, so I'll have to have a follow-up, well, I'm giving the follow-up from two weeks ago, and it's not a good follow-up, but just letting everybody know. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression, and our first speaker will be Carolyn Jackson.
Good evening and thank you. Just like to bring to your attention, in two thousand and twelve, the United Nations declared March twentieth to be observed as the International Day of Happiness. That day recognizes that happening, happiness is a fundamental human goal and calls upon cities and countries to approach public policies in ways that improve the well-being of all people. In saying that, I can't help but to think about what so many things that have gone on in the City of Hammond over the past ten, twelve years. So many cuts, um, and eliminations from the leaf vacuuming to now the garbage dumpsters, which seem to be a pretty large conversation and a lengthy one. You know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend duplicating services, if that's what we're doing. However, what about the well-being and the happiness of those individuals in our city that those dumpsters are putting a smile on their face? But I really think above and beyond that, you know, with the library situation the way it is, we're about to lose another very important valuable service to the cities. Why not utilize that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards maintaining a library? You know, March second, I don't know, many of you are probably have grandchildren, 'cause I'm sure your children aren't in the age group where they would benefit, well, they, everyone will benefit, but specifically children, because, um, March second happens to be the birthday of Dr. Seuss, as well as the celebration on March second for the Reading Across America. Now, this year, the libraries will be open, where the children can take advantage of that, but what about in the future? Today is not promised to all of us, but you have children, I'm sure you have grandchildren, if not, if you're not, if you don't, you should want things here in the city in, um, laid out in such a way that they will benefit your children and those children to come. Think about that, you know, when you make cuts, always look at having a solution to improve the well-being of others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Next speaker will be Mr. George Stoya.
Amazing.
The last speaker of the night will be Mr. Alvin Cheeks.
Councilman Higgs, I'd like to thank you for those dumpsters, so I call it in a favor, Councilman Higgs, we, uh, we're still gonna have our dumpsters, also too, we got some backhoes in the hole now. Um, I'd like to thank that person that's gonna help us with the extra gear and stuff, so we're still gonna take care of our neighborhood, and we're not gonna let that neighborhood cleanup die. Um, we also have several other gifts, I, I'd just like to thank you during Black History Month, Councilman Higgs, for the hard work that you do in our community, but also, I don't want you to forget with the forty-four thousand dollars that you promised the kids a golf hole, so I would hope with the extra forty-four, you spend the eight for the golf hole, and thank you. And also too, I, I do support the library and, and the work that it does, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeks. You have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Higgs, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Rule suspended.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.